Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular scheduled council meeting for November 12th. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Litterell.
Here.
Councilmember Rushing.
Here.
Councilmember Upton.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. And I'll turn it's over to Councilmember Curran for the...
All right, thank you, Your Honor. We'll stand for the pledge and for a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we can stand for a moment of silence in remembrance of the people who have lost lives in California and the destructions of their homes in the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we have an agenda before us, and it's been brought to our attention that we need to make an adjustment. Can I ask Mr. McHugh to explain what it is he would like to add to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Yes, Mayor and Council, yes. Tonight, I would ask that Council add a resolution to the agenda on the Southview piece of property. Late Friday afternoon, we had two mediations, and last week, we had two conference calls with the court, and Friday afternoon was the second conference call, and we worked out all the terms with the other two attorneys. They're working on the entry right now. I drafted and sent that out. But in order to meet some of the requirements to get this thing, this case resolved, I've got a 21-day deadline to move forward, and in order to do that, moving it another two weeks really makes it very difficult. So tonight, I prepared, and you have before you a little memo on this, and then also a resolution that if Council adds this to the agenda and is so inclined, can approve the settlement by approving this resolution.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda?
I would move to approve the, to add the Resolution 1848 to the agenda.
Now, a second.
I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you.
I would make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Please.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries again. Minutes, approval of the minutes. We'll start with the October 8th, 2018, regular meeting. Any input?
So moved.
One of those nights. I have a motion to approve the October 8th regular meeting minutes as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. October 22nd work session. Any input there?
Mr. Mayor, there's no comment. I make motion to approve the October 22nd work session.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes for the October 22nd work session as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have extensions.
I'll get the opposed, same first. Extentions. Thank you. All right, next. October 22nd, 2018, regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted for the October 22nd, 2018, regular meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Extentions. Thank you. Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First is ordinance 18-23.
This is a third reading of an ordinance rezoning 3.5 acres from R-1A and B2 to CPUD 18-3, further described as Book Two, page 11. Parcels 140, 141, 144, 145, and 146 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. This is the third reading of this ordinance. It was sponsored by Vice Mayor Garcia. The public hearings have already been held. Is there any input from Council?
I'd just like to remind the public that this is just the rezoning, and we'll have the whole development coming at a future time.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Vice Mayor?
I see no further comments, Mr. Mayor. I would move to approve ordinance 18-23.
18-3. Oh, I'm sorry, 23. You got me. Got me going there. Second, I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 18-23. It's PUD 18-3. That's what I was looking at. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Extentions. Motion carries. Thanks. Next, ordinance 18-24.
This is a third reading of an ordinance repealing current personnel rules and regulations for the city of Beaver Creek and adopting new personal rules and regulations for the city of Beaver Creek.
Again, this is the second, or the third reading. The public hearings have been held. This ordinance was sponsored by Councilmember Upton. Any comments from Council?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further comment, I would move for approval of ordinance 18-24.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 18-24. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is ordinance 18-25.
This is a second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 158 by making certain additions, deletions, and changes to various sections of the zoning code.
Thank you. This is the second reading, so this is the public hearing. Is there anyone present tonight that would like to address Council on this ordinance? Please give us your name and address, and limit your comments to approximately three minutes.
Okay, Harold, it was 1423 Town Hall. I'd like to back up to 1824 for just one second. I didn't catch this until today, but this thing is effective last week. Did you all catch that? It says this ordinance shall take effect November 1st. That's last week.
It's been a standard practice. We begin at the beginning of a month. I mean, it's Employee Manual. It's not an ordinance or anything. It's more of the Employee Manual.
But let's go by the city charter. City Charter says 30 days after passage, not postdated. If we're going to do it this time, how many more times are we going to do it? Change it. Go by the city charter. Thank you. Okay, now, 18, this one. This one is showing up as an emergency ordinance. Let me read it. The doubts of proposed change, yada, yada. This is an emergency ordinance, and will come effective immediately. That's wrong. It's not an emergency ordinance. Okay, now, let's get into the meat of it. I don't know why we're doing this.
I'm not clear where we're going here. This is, we're not, we're not showing this as an emergency on the, anywhere that I see.
Can I approach?
Yes, please.
Yeah, the summary.
This is an emergency and will come effective immediately.
That was from the previous week, or previous time. Yeah, that was previous. That was the one we knew, and we had long... That's, yeah, from the previous time, and that was one he brought to our attention last time, but in the current packet, it is not that way.
Well, that's what I got off the website today.
It is in the current packet.
It is in the current?
The packet I received.
Section 3, though, says it'll take effect at the earliest date allowed by law, which is, and it has no caption that's not say "emergency." This is not an emergency ordinance. It is clearly not.
Okay, where do you want to...
I'm not sure where the caption came from, the summary.
The meat of this one. We have enough problem with our zoning code as it is. Only thing you have to do is drive around Beaver Creek and see zoning code violations all over the place. Just go up and down Dayton-Zena Road. Go west of here. Go down to, I think it's Geneva, down by Hand's Road, and look at that doctor's office, the old doctor's office, going down the road. We have enough. Now, this one became interesting, though. It says prohibited accessory structures. We added "commercial" to this, and it talks about temporary sheds and tents. Well, my first thing I want to do was see what the definition of a temporary shed was. There is none in the code, so how can we enforce it? If you look at the definition for a tent, and my, what I think it was intended to do was cars and things like that in the yard. If you look at the definition of a tent, it says for sheltering the public or private gathering constructed wholly in part from canvas, shall include shelters for circuses, carnivals, sideshows, revivals, camp meetings, and all similar meetings. If we're talking about something like cars, we need to change the definition. It's not in there.
Well, I don't know that, nobody's told me we were talking about cars, but that...
Well, but if you go back and listen, that's somebody, I think Councilwoman Van asked the question, or somebody did, we're talking about cars and backyards. So go back and look at the meeting. And even so, do we have a tent permit?
Yes.
Okay, look over here at Target. With this, that tent that was over there, at Target for two or three months, would that be permitted underneath this?
Well, that had to have a building permit, correct, from the county?
The, that large tent that was over there, I believe so, yeah.
And they, and like at St. Luke's Church, all the churches have tents. My thing is, is are we ready for this yet? You know, particularly when we're adding tents to the prohibited accessory structures and storage sheds? I don't know what a storage shed is. A temporary shed. What is it? Then you go on to another section. No chain link or split rail fence over 48 inches. I drive around Beaver Creek a lot. I've yet to see a split rail fence over 48 inches. It might exist, but where? And is it a big nuisance? It's just another job for a zoning inspector. He's got enough work that can't get done. And then we talk about, this is a beautiful one. Used parking and storage of vehicles and recreational vehicles. What you did there is you, it was strictly residential before, now it's commercial. And so what it says is, you can't do it. Commercial vehicles include step-up vans, heavy trucks, semis, delivery trucks, box trucks, dump trucks, tow trucks, wreckers. Every business around has a truck. What have we done here? We're telling them now you can't park these things overnight.
Not at the business, at a residence.
No. No, sir. Disagree.
That's like the semi loads.
Oh, semis, okay.
That's covering.
That was the issue.
You've added "our" commercially to it.
Okay.
Okay, so that's going to create a problem. I mean, just go, just go up North Fairfield, see the number of businesses that have trucks sitting there. Chick-fil-A overnight, they have a truck sitting out there, step in. Aldi's does. Milano's Pizza does. I don't think this is ready for passage tonight. This is a disaster waiting to happen. And let's let a zoning inspector get out and get rid of junk vehicles that people report that are still in the yards. This is too much. Stop this tonight. This whole zoning, it's not necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy, do you want to have any input on this?
Yeah, I believe we were talking about Section 158, 118, on page 3 in Exhibit A. You know, we can look at how we define some of these commercial vehicles to ensure that we're not talking about small delivery trucks or something like that. The intent there was to prohibit the semi, semi-trailers that you would see, that are larger than what should be parked overnight, you know, in comparison to the size of the lot and stuff like that. So, you know, we could take a further look at how we define those commercial vehicles to make sure that, you know, like the rapid-fire pizza truck or small box trucks aren't all of a sudden become, you know, illegal or they're not allowed to be parked.
All right. Well, you heard, you heard the concern, so if, before we get to approval at the third reading, maybe you'll have answers to those?
Yeah, yeah, that's something we definitely will have answers for.
Mr. Mayor, I do agree. I, in reviewing that, I was thinking that it was overnight, and it was a certain type of vehicle. And I thought that we had, in our discussions, talked about some of the vans and things, you know, delivery vans, delivery vehicles, I think is what we had discussed, that anything larger than a certain amount, so maybe we want to...
Yeah, we can, we can make a clearer, more technical definition rather than generalized definition. It's something we can look into.
Thank you.
Do we need to table this now or wait until we see what comes back?
No, I would wait till the third reading.
Okay, I see what comes back.
And then I'll give Mr. McGrath an opportunity, since he's not here tonight, to...
Do you have a summary list of your, of your complaints?
Call them concerns.
I'm getting my notes here, but when I read it, I said, what's a storage shed?
I just think that we need to relook at some of those again before next week and, or for the next reading, and so I might take your notes.
But I think, you know, since there's questions asked about a tent, go back and look at what Mr. McGrath said last meeting, because I looked at that again, just to verify that, you know, he talked about cars and people's backyards being covered with a tent. Okay, but there's, if you look at the definition of a tent, it wouldn't cover...
Yeah, well, we'll look at it before next week, before the next reading.
All right.
Thanks for bringing them to our attention.
Is there anyone else that would like to address Council on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and this, this will move on to the third reading, which will be our next regular scheduled meeting, and we will anticipate some answers and some clarifications. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next is Resolution 18-45.
This is a resolution to authorize the submittal of the Grange Hall Road at I-675 Interchange Project and Miami Valley Research Park Utility Master Plan for prioritization through the Dayton Regional Priority Development and Advocacy Committee.
Hello, hello.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Staff has recently been informed that applications are being accepted for the PDAC process. And as you may already know, with the PDAC process, the goal is to assemble a list of regionally significant projects that they can share with our congressional representatives to try to secure funding to get some of these important local projects done. Looking at the requirements, we're recommending two projects, two applications. The first being, the study is necessary to advance the work to convert the interchange at I-675 and Grange Hall Road to a full interchange. As you know, right now, it's only a half interchange where, you know, obviously, since I-675 was originally built, things have developed and changed quite a bit out there where we think it justifies a full interchange of that location. The second application involves doing a utility master plan for the Miami Valley Research Foundation and the research park. And speaking with the research foundation, one of the barriers to investment and development in the research park is the lack of access to utilities, whereby our hope by doing this study is we can identify some shovel-ready sites to help spur some investment and also to have a long-term master plan where they could plan for the future and start having some, some infrastructure in place to support a sustained growth in the research park. And if you have any questions, we have to answer them.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions?
A question, Your Honor. This particular priority, is this both to the state legislative delegation and congressional, or both?
I believe it's only to our federal...
It's the federal?
Yes, sir.
Not to the state delegation?
I know they're involved with it, but I think the main thrust of it is to go after federal monies for this.
Okay.
And I would encourage you to use the word "jobs" in there, because we're looking to create jobs. I would definitely put that in there.
Absolutely.
Anyone else?
The, so the staff was made aware of a November 9th deadline in our summary.
Right. Yeah, well...
So have we already submitted and gone through the process?
We did submit, just to make sure we met that deadline, but of course, if Council isn't on board with either of these projects, we can always pull back that application.
Right.
And one thing, I know Mr. Mormon, in doing these grants in a previous position that I had, sometimes they pop up very quickly.
Sure.
And so I...
Exactly.
Yeah, we were made aware in October, and the deadline was on.
Yeah, and then they're due. So appreciate the team working diligently to get that in on time and then making sure that Council was aware, so great job.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Your Honor, another question. When would this money be available, by the way, from your experience?
Well, you know, it's kind of hard to tell. You know, with the one project, we've submitted it several years now without much luck, but you know, if you never try, you're never going to get it. So as far as like a definitive answer as far as when the funding's going to get here, I really don't know, because it's all based upon what our congressional delegation can do for us, I think, so. I don't have a good answer for that.
Hmm. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
I would move for approval of 18-45.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 18-45. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Extentions. Motion carries. Next. Yeah, that's Resolution 18-48, please.
This is a resolution to authorize the submittal of the Grange Hall Road, oh, you don't know the wrong one, sorry. You did that one, sorry. This is a resolution approving the settlement of appropriation case number 2018 CV 0422, City of Beaver Creek, Ohio versus Christopher F. Cowan, Administrator for the estate of Andrew E. Merits, AKA Andrew Elmer Merits, E.T.L., and authorizing the city manager to take all steps necessary to finalize the settlement.
Okay, thank you. Any further input from...
No, no, certainly, certainly not. Mr. Merits, so for the record, did pass away in 2014 in the House, has been uninhabited since that time, so it's in, it needs work.
And just for clarity, this is this piece of property about the Laffino Center, and it is a piece of property that needs to be improved, and the best improvement is to demolish. And so the, the city has taken steps to be able to add that property for parking, et cetera, at that center. Any further comments for discussion on Council? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Yeah, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 18-48. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Extentions. Motion carries. Thank you. And move on to decision items. Accepting the third quarter 2018 financial summary. We all got a copy of that. Any discussion?
I do have a question.
Please.
Mr. Casere, could you come up, please? Sorry, I put you on the spot. As you're walking, my question is, some of the statements here, I look at our general fund, the city received 1.4 million or 62,000 more than last year, representing a 4.5% increase. I skip down to the police fund, the city received 8.4 million or 42,000 more than last year, but then the road levy, the street levy, 45, or it was less. We received $45,000 more, same as the police levy, but it was 0.8% less than collected last year. Is that, is that right? I mean...
Yeah, that, when those levies come over for the street levies, we have to just kind of allocate those out. They're not really designated for those particular funds. They come in kind of like a bulk, and then we have to break it out, and during that breakout, some of that gets allocated out, and again, it just doesn't equal the other ones. They're not one-to-one in those particular funds, so...
Okay, I just thought...
If you net those two out, they're about the same as, if you net the two street levies out, it's about the same increase as those other two, though, so...
Okay.
It's just weird the way, again, the way that the county auditor sends those over to us like that, so...
Okay, I was thrown off, because I'm thinking, you know, we're collecting the same dollars, you know, then the millages haven't changed from one quarter to another.
Well, and again, there's delinquencies being paid in there and different things like that that cost variables, too, but they shouldn't, basically, if you look at all three or four of those, they're all in the same ballpark.
Yeah.
Right.
So that's really the dispersment from the auditor?
Right.
All right.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
So, okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the third quarter 2018 financial summary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Mayor's report. Well, there's a couple of big items, and I know everybody else is going to mention it, too, and I hope you, we all repeat it, but the girls' soccer state champs, I mean, that's just fantastic.
And the, and the cross-country.
Cross-country is, did it, it's regional, right?
They're state champs, too. Nope, state champs.
Well, fantastic.
One Friday, one Saturday. Yay, women!
All right, that's fantastic, too.
That's right.
So we're looking, we're looking forward to inviting those two teams, groups to come up to City Council.
It's pretty cool, though. Pretty amazing. And last year, the boys' soccer team got it.
Yeah.
So we're just...
Yeah, absolutely. And then, of course, the Sunday, our Veterans Day ceremony, we had probably the largest crowd we've ever had. Some of that was due to the groups that were participants, but even excluding that, there was still a turnout that was amongst the top in this that we've ever done. And I've been to every one but one. We had some new people that we've never had before there. We had the Civil Air Patrol, the Junior ROTC, Air Force ROTC, and we had the Beaver Creek High School Wind Symphony. So neither of those three groups had been, had participated in this event before, and it just made things very special. And they, of course, were on top of the Cub Scouts, the Boy Scouts, the American Legion of F.W. It just went on and on, but we had a couple that repeat. We had the, we had the Airman First Class Smart, who did the singing. It just went on and on. I mean, it was, it was no, it's like the moons all came together and lined up.
It was terrific.
It was, it was just, our base commander...
And you did a great, and you did a great job.
Well, that's...
No, you did. You did a great job.
Well, thank you. But our base commander was quite a storyteller, Colonel Thomas Sherman. He was, he was our main speaker, and so we all appreciated that as well. So like I say, things just worked out so well that it's hard to understand sometimes why, how everything comes together that well. But Parks and Rec was a big, big part of that. They were certainly a big part of that job. All right, I am going to stop with that then, and we will start on my right. Councilmember Litterell, would you like to...
Yes, sir, thank you. So again, congratulations to our high school teams. That's wonderful, on behalf of, just so proud of them all, so that's great. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we had the COPP graduation, no, I'm sorry. Yeah.
CPA.
CPA, thank you. Graduation, and I've been to that.
We want them to become COPPs.
Yeah, we want them to become, we do. That's what I was thinking. So it was a wonderful graduation. We had, there were 16 that graduated, and this is a class that goes on several times and the Citizens Police Academy. You can't say enough about Beaver Creek, but that is one of the best community engagement programs that we have. The police department just does a phenomenal job. All of the people that I have known that have went through that program either become COPPs or become very active in assisting with the police department with donations and are just so supportive. So that just goes back to, we have some of the best volunteers in the city I've ever seen, so, and that, and not to eliminate all of those on committees and our charter and all of the different things that we've had. So Beaver Creek just has some wonderful volunteerism, so, and I know Joanna might have some other things to say, because we were there together.[1732.86] And then the other thing I wanted to congratulate Sergeant Kroll, because that was his last graduate, Citizens Police Academy, and Mark Brown is going to be the next person in charge of that group. So I'm sure it'll be lots of fun, just like it was with Sergeant Kroll, so that was great. And then the other thing I just want to remind everyone of, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your service as a veteran. We just, you know, every time that you look at what goes on in America, we just would not be the country that we are without our veterans. And so I just wanted to thank you and all of the veterans, because we just cannot do what we do in America without the people that have protected us. So, thank you all.
Councilmember Rech.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To join the rest of council, congratulating the girls soccer and cross-country team. You know, from ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, those young ladies are going to look back and have this memory in their head that, you know, they went to state champs. And not only is it a great moment now, but they'll always look back to their hometown of Beaver Creek, and hopefully they stay here and invest into it. Two weeks ago, we had the opening of Raising Cane's. I have yet to see people get more excited over a single food item, like chicken tenders, but they were lined up all the way down the street, and they had a unique story to tell about their founding and sort of their commitment to the community, which is great, because, you know, we love our volunteers. We also love our business partners who look to our community, find ways to give back in their own special way. So I look forward to frequenting their establishment here shortly. And also, this past Tuesday, obviously, we all know it was Election Day. Thank you for all those who voted. I believe Green County had won the highest voter turnout of all of our surrounding region. So that's just a true testament, and as we all know, Beaver Creek drives that and Green County. So whichever, which way you believe, you know, the best way is just to express it in, you know, future elections, to go out and vote. Obviously, on this past, yesterday, we celebrate Veterans Day. Thank you for all those who did serve and who continue to serve our great country. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Van.
Speaking of grand openings, I have heard that another broken egg is going to open on November thirtieth. And so you can plan your brunch plans for December, because it's one of my favorite restaurants, and I recruited the developer to put it there. So I am very excited about this.
All right.
So, the other thing, we did have an election, and behold, behold, our council member Charles Kern was re-elected and will now serve us for another year. Do we need to swear him in, or is this just a dime? That's really a question, because he had to.
Swear at?
Swear at.
But serious.
He will.
He will get sworn in, sworn in. But anyway, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate what you contribute to this team, and congratulations.
Thank you.
I enjoyed voting for you.
So I am going to, just so council knows, I'll be upfront, I am going to go to the Sugar Creek Township meeting tonight, because I believe that when us adjacent jurisdiction develops property that impacts our roadway system, that they need to hear from us. And I think, I know that, that our staff has already worked with them, but I also know that when an issue comes before our council and we feel it's important to, the problem is Darst Road was a cow path or just a convenient little lane that went around a apple orchard or something when it was, when it was platted. It was not platted because there were people, a lot of people, south of Beaver Creek that needed to come north, or a lot of Beaver Creek people that needed to go south. And so now we have Darst Road that comes down, it makes a weird turn to the east, and then it goes south again, and then if you want to turn on Swagert, you have to turn more than ninety degrees. It's, it's a horrible turn to turn if you want to go east again. And the time to redevelop a roadway like that is when the developer is putting land in there, is putting his houses in there. And luckily, the Green County thoroughfare plan says that Darst Road is supposed to be connected to Wagner. Well, that may or may not be the best choice at this time, but at least some fourth, forward-thinking planners a decade or two ago said, this is going to be a problem sometime, we need to think about it. Well, now we have a solution time, and we need to make sure that Sugar Creek pays attention and does the right thing. And I know that our staff is trying to make it happen, but I think as council people, we can do just what the citizens do to us when they think there's a problem, we can speak out. So I'm going to go to the meeting tonight and just say, let's be smart here, let's work together, let's do a traffic, let's do a roadways analysis, let's figure out the best solution, and then let's work it out together, and so it's best for us. So I just wanted you to know I was good at doing that, I wrote a letter. I'm going to give them a letter, and I'm going to stand up and talk, so. There we go.
All right, that's good.
I have another complaint. We have a resident who, who is having severe problems with dogs, because by chance she has a disease that allows her to have a really hard time sleeping, and these dogs are barking all times of the day and night, and, and she has a problem with it. And we have no dog ordinance in this, in this city. And we've, we've had problems in the past with people having a herd of dogs in their backyard, and the adjacent property owners were afraid for their grandchildren, they were afraid for children in the, in the region. And we, we talked about it, but we never passed anything. And I would urge the staff to think through having a dog ordinance. I would be willing to, I love dogs. I would be willing to limit the number of, of dogs a household could have to be four or five. I would be willing to support what the police would like us to support for dogs that are chained out and are barking and are causing people significant problems. I think we need to look at this and, and develop some legislation.
Very good.
With the twenty-three dogs of Grange Hall.
Yeah, I think when that complaint came through, I think staff started taking a look at something to, we can do to, to work on that, so I don't know what they're, where they're at with it right now, but they'll work on it. Thank you. Flash Mayor.
Um, just to echo the Citizens Police Academy, that was a great evening. I think we have two of our returning graduates in our audience, and I think they could attest to how wonderful it is as well. But there was, there were a few things that were said. The class president made a comment saying how nice it is now that, you know, when you go through this class, you see officers and you don't say, oh, look, there's a Beaver Creek officer. You say, oh, look, there's Officer Brown, or there's Sergeant Kroll. They know these officers by name, and that's really neat to say, because a lot of communities don't have that. And he also made the comment that until he went through this class, you don't realize how quickly something that could be routine, which I hate that word, but something routine could turn very south very quickly. So it's just great that our community does this, and I think that's what garners a lot of support for our police. And I'm very happy and grateful that the police levy passed and voting on Tuesday, that's really nice to see. Just a few other things, for the veterans ceremony, I thought the wind symphony was fantastic. I think they did a great job. It was really nice that they had a little musical spot for each branch of the military, and then asked everyone to stand and sing if they were in that branch, which was really nice to see. Mayor Stone was standing a lot during that, so it was good to see. I didn't see any song. Maybe humming, there may have been humming.
Maybe humming, there you go.
But we had, it was a very beautiful ceremony, we had a great weather for it, so it was nice to see that turnout. Just real quick for housekeeping, the annual reviews were sent out for both the city clerk and the city manager. I know there were some troubles with the links, so if you can have that done sometime before Thanksgiving, that would be great. Now that the links were sent out for both of those surveys, I would really appreciate it. And then finally, I had the opportunity to attend the Family and Children's First Committee last week. We heard from the State Treasurer's Office about a stable account, which they have set up. It's a savings account for individuals with disabilities, which is really nice. It's a protected account that cannot be counted against any other benefits, such as Medicaid or disability. So this is on top of everything else that they would receive. And for those who are able to manage it themselves, it gives them a lot of independence and security. For those who can't, there's ways that they can have a family member, a parent, a guardian, or a power of attorney assist with those. So it was really nice to hear how the state's helping those individuals, so.
Yeah, and that's, that's been a problem for a long, long time, especially people on Medicaid.
But it also has some limitations of what you can spend on, too.
Yes, yeah, I mean, it was a very in-depth, but just the broad overview is really nice to hear, just the accounts that they have in place and how that they're helping individuals throughout the state, so.
And I echo your sentiments on the appreciation of the public passing our police levies, so.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Stone. Also like to throw in my congratulations to Beaver Creek's athletic teams. Way to go, ladies, both the soccer and cross-country teams. Also, on a second, the thankfulness for the passage of the police levy. And also throw out, thank you to the voters for passing issue nine. I thought it was an important issue, and it looks like a large majority of the citizens did as well, so it's pleased to see that. Only additional comment for me tonight, for those of you that have been following along, Creek Safe has hit their fundraising goal, and they are going to be doing a presentation tomorrow evening, on Tuesday, the twelfth, at, or excuse me, the thirteenth, at Main Elementary. They'll be giving three hundred and nineteen locks to the school district, which is enough locks to cover every elementary door in the district. So they're really excited about that. Should be a good presentation, and then furthermore, it'll make our, our children safer at schools. So it's glad to see they hit that goal, and they've committed to continuing their mission to expand into the middle schools and high school. So more to come, hopefully, from Creek Safe. That's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Carr.
Yeah, again, just to reiterate all the things that have been said, I'm kind of the tail of the dog here. But particularly recognize. Recognize the bets and all the commitment and effort that they put forward and to, to put in place our, our country and sacrifice on their part. And recognize, again, as brought up by Councilmember Van, the girls athletic teams at the high school, and was at the police event the other night, which was very, very invigorating to see the number of citizens involved. And I'll be attending the legislative reception for all of the state legislators and the Congress members on Thursday evening. That's sponsored by the Dayton Area Chamber of Commerce. And again, I think our ability to be able to interact with these people is very important in getting money. It's got to be more than a letter, and all of you know that, so I'm looking forward to that visit. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. By the way, the Citizen Police Academy, have they scheduled another, another one yet? Anybody know?
No, chief.
I had somebody ask me about that the other day, so thanks. All right, city managers' report.
Well, if Councilmember Kern is the tail, I don't know where that leaves me. Because I've got the same thing everybody's already said, so we'll make this quick. Thank you to everybody who supported the Beaver Creek Police Department, the passage of the four point five mil renewal. We appreciate that, that allows us to continue the great programs and efforts that we have in our police department, our community engagement officers, our school resource officers and so forth, that are really gaining popularity or gaining awareness in the community. So we thank you again to the citizens. Also, again, yeah, I attended the Police Academy graduation, that was great, great questions by that. We kind of had a panel, and we answered questions, they always have good information. And yes, this, that was a class number sixteen, and for those that are wanting more information, it's an eight-week informational series to educate citizens about the Beaver Creek Police Department and the police work, and they get a ride-along and, and things like that. They'll see more things from the perspective of a, a police officer, and it's very eye-opening, from what I've been told. So we'll, when we get that information out, this is one of those things that if you aren't one of the very first to sign up, it's full. So be watching out for when we have an announcement for the class. And again, everybody's already kind of said this, but congratulate the state champs for the girls soccer team and the girls cross-country team, excellent job, very proud. The only thing I'm already thinking is, where are we going to have enough sign space on, at our properties, so, coming into the city? So we'll, we'll, we'll find a way.
Especially to meet our zoning code.
Meet our zoning code, yeah. Got to have a wall of signs. And Veterans Day ceremony, I was there as well, great weather, as mentioned. And just to speak, the whole atmosphere, very, it was just very moving. I, I found it one of the best ones I had attended. The story of the knife by Colonel Sherman was excellent, and actually afterwards, I got to see the knife that he was talking about. Just very moving, you could not have planned it. Thank you for everyone who participated. We put some pictures out there on Facebook, and, but from Junior R O T C, you went down the list, Mayor, so I'll leave it at that. But it was just very good. If you, as a resident, haven't attended these in the past, they are worth attending the Memorial Day services as well as the Veterans Day service that we have out there, it's very moving. And lastly, that's something that's not mentioned, that's brand new. We just put out, we've been working on it, but we wanted to stay out of the way of the Parkmaster Plan survey that was out there. So now we have just a Survey Monkey that's out there, a survey for just the general services of the city. We just posted to our webpage and posted to our Facebook and Twitter as well, account, so there's a link there to the Survey Monkey. If you take that, it only takes you five, ten minutes to answer a couple of questions real quick about city services. And it's about us helping to improve the services that the citizens receive. So that'll be up for the next about thirty days, and it is live and ready for, for you now, so. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
The signs at the entryway of the city that have all the sports winnings on them. When we started that program a while back, we didn't expect it to be.
That good?
No, no, we, 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 at the time, I cannot remember the conversation, but it was that we were going to post the, the teams within the last five years, or there was, there was a, because we didn't really, we wanted to celebrate the, the recent ones, but not, not every single one for the whole eternity of the life. So we could revisit that at a, a work session of city council and rethink about what that policy is.
We definitely will have to revisit that, because I know when we squeezed the boys the last time, it was like, okay, the next one, we're going to have to have some decisions. So you are correct, Councilmember Van, that's for sure.
All right. Moving on, next item is citizen comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council on any issue at all? If so, please come up and give us the name and address. And we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, unless you have somebody that would like to donate time to you.
Hi, I'm Sydney Garing at twelve seventy-five Oak Leaf Drive in Beaver Creek. The first comment is, we have great bike pathways. I love that about Beaver Creek, it's why we've lived here three times and are retired here, we, that's one of the reasons. And I appreciate all the bike pathways that we do have, and I think continuing to have safe spots for accessible for children and adults to be able to be on their own roadway versus on the roads is important. So I also appreciate that you put stanchion signs reminding everyone the importance of wearing a helmet. So I am standing up here looking terrible tonight, a week after a bad bike accident, but thankfully, I was wearing my helmet, had my daughter with me, and it's a great way. When we first were here, they were little three and one-year-olds, and they grew up with Beaver Creek and bike paths and knowing the importance of helmets. And one of them was with me when I had my accident, so she was able to see firsthand the cracked helmet that is not her mom's cracked skull. So I think kudos on Beaver Creek for continuing to make the efforts that we do to make that a wonderful park and recreation program, and emphasis with the signs, so parents can continue to say, see, it's the law, it's required, you know, why we wear helmets and stuff. So that was just a side comment, since I was prompted to come up here and, you know, show this little part of me that, my first day out in a week. But I would like to ask you, Ms. Van, when you do look into the dog ordinance, I'm the president of our H O A, so I have recently had to, had neighbors in our neighborhood come to me about a similar issue we're having in our neighborhood. And I did comb through and trying to find what the answers are of how to advise and how, how to help mitigate. And you mentioned some specifics that you are going to explore. So I don't have firsthand knowledge, and I don't have dogs myself, but I do know there are some folks in my neighborhood that are all over dog training and all that kind of stuff. If you, I could refer them to you, but I'm sure you have best practices with other communities you could leverage off of. The two specific issues are, how long is okay? Two, I said, two specific issues that have come to my attention that I've tried to wrestle with of what's reasonable on this is to look at is, how long is it okay when you let your dogs independently go out on the property? And if they're barkers, how long is okay to be out there doing their business, having their free roam time if they're just yappers at every car or pedestrian? And we have a very walk-friendly neighborhood with sidewalks. So that's one thing, is what's reasonable to have a dog out there barking for how long? And, and, you know, the words by those who are affected most nearby is incessantly, but, you know. So I don't know that, that's one. I'm looking to look for answers to help give guidance and point. The other, the second issue was, in one instance where people put the invisible fences, they did so right up to the edge of. did so right up to the edge of their, of the sidewalk. And literally, it has completely changed the traffic pattern of, we have lots of runners, some of those are cross-country teams that run back through there, by the way, just mentioning about our, our kids that go running back there, but they have to take a massive beeline around that corner lot in particular in our neighborhood because that invisible fence, they've gone all the way up to the sidewalk and especially, I see mothers who are pushing strollers that go by and they have to go off the sidewalk into the street because the dogs charge the line right up to it. So I don't know if there's a better easement to bring that back. So again, I'm not sure what the answer to that is, but if you could add that to your list of what's appropriate to, for the safety of the dogs as well as for any of the passersby's that have a right to not feel threatened to remain on the sidewalk as they utilize our sidewalks, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else tonight that would like to address council? Anyone at all? Seeing none, we will move on. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.